To this afternoon's town board work session of Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. I ask everybody to please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. It is a great flag that stands one nation under God, visible in every way and across this world.
All right, we've got a couple items on the work session agenda. And then we'll go through the town board agenda items. And then we have an executive session regarding a personnel matter. Related to an individual. So I'm going to one individual, I think, Bob. Personnel matter, one, okay, thanks. So with that said, the first items on our work session agenda are presentations of traffic signal rehabilitation at the off-ramp of the I nine ninety in Millersport Highway. And presentation of pavement rehabilitation project, a segment of Flint Road to Campbell Boulevard. I'm going to ask, Brian, are you doing the, who's doing the presentation? Okay, we'll ask Mr. Dankert to come up and do the presentations. And then we want to go through both of them, and then if there's any questions, we can go through it after. Okay, perfect. All right, with that said, please go ahead.
So thank you for allowing me to do your presentation in the, for the town Amherst here. Introductions, we're doing the information, we're doing a culvert replacement and a traffic signal rehab in town Amherst into nine ninety.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So I brought some individuals that will be working on the project. Musa, he's the designer. Chris, he's the designer for the other project. And Mohammed's the design job manager for the project that I'm gonna go through right, the first one here. And I'm the project manager for the project. So the project is located, everybody's probably aware of the end of the nine ninety at Millersport. Located in the northeast quadrant of the town of Amherst. We have a culvert roughly about three hundred feet long underneath the nine ninety. Right now, it's a double barrel culvert, seven foot diameter pipes. And we have the traffic signal at the end of the nine ninety, number four seventy-nine. We're planning to replace the culvert and rehab the existing signal at the, at the end of nine ninety. Why we're replacing the culvert, we, the culvert was installed roughly around nineteen ninety-one. Currently, there's a red flag on that culvert. We paved invert trying to extend the overall life of the culvert. Here's some inspection photos, there's severe deterioration along the paved invert line. There's concrete, we paved the invert with concrete. But this section where the concrete and the corrugated metal pipe is deteriorating to the fact where we have fines going through the culvert. So we have severe deterioration of the culvert. So our plan is to replace the culvert under the nine ninety and be able to reestablish a good flow of water underneath the nine ninety. The current culvert, like I said before, is two double barrel, seven foot diameter pipes. We're gonna replace it with a fourteen foot by seven foot reinforced concrete box. The box will be roughly about two hundred ninety-five feet long. We will have it submerged one foot for natural stream bed bottom. And the rise will be sixteen or six feet tall by fourteen feet. And here's a preliminary section of the culvert, as is what we're proposing. We will be closed, we will be doing work zone traffic control to remain, keep traffic open. We will be constructing, we'll have our prefabricator bring, fabricate boxes and have them place boxes as part of the installation of the new culvert. The traffic signal at the end of the nine ninety off-ramp will get rehabbed. We'll replace all the infrastructure, the heads, the wires, span wire, except for the span wire poles. They will remain, and we will replace the cabinet. And we will also put in a three sixty degree camera detection for traffic detection. Here's some of the items that we're gonna be replacing, everything in red is what we're replacing. We're replacing the span wire, the heads. We will replace some of the conduit underneath Miller Support. And some of the, all the items in blue that's out there existing, like pole boxes and conduit, some of that will remain in place. Other items will be removed. And replaced. Work zone traffic control, we're not closing the nine ninety for installation of the box. We will maintain traffic on the, on the nine ninety. We're proposing first phase, we will be closing the nine ninety for, at the culvert, but building a bypass. The first phase, they'll build the bypass, traffic will be maintained on the existing nine ninety. And then as we're ready to, the contractor's ready to get the installation started, they'll be working on the north and the south sides of the culvert simultaneously. And we'll have traffic flowing north, south through the median of the, median of the nine ninety. In phase two, we're going to reopen the nine ninety, they'll have this section open to one lane per direction. And they'll insert the boxes in the middle of the median. Maintaining traffic here and here. Right away, there is no right away on this project, everything will be done within the state right away. We have no utilities in this corridor to be concerned with that will be impacted. And if there is anything that we possibly impacted, we'll try to avoid. Our project schedule, we're anticipating design approval end of December here. Letting in May, construction will be a two-season construction project. The first season, we anticipate the contractor to build the bypasses and also start fabrication of the boxes for the culvert. And then actual construction where we will detour traffic will probably happen in the second year of, in twenty-seven, summer twenty-seven. My contact information is here. If anybody has any questions or concerns, you can email me, call me. Just make sure you provide what the project is regarding. I've also placed comment sheets up front for anybody that has questions about the project after we're gone. We have, we like to have a couple weeks of comment period, so we're expecting like November twenty-fourth. If you guys can mail them in, but if it takes a little bit longer, that's all right. But we're trying to target twenty-fourth for a comment period for our design report.
Alright, thanks, you wanna, that part of the. I was gonna say, you wanna go right into the next one?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we can go right into the next one. So I'm also here for the other job manager, project manager for fifty-five, sixty-eight, sixteen. This is the other portion of Miller Support. We're going from Flint Road up to Campbell, it's roughly about two and a half miles of one hour project. So we will be doing a mill and overlay, inch and a half, we'll be looking at guide rail replacements, ADA upgrades. We also be looking at replacing the signs as needed. The traffic signals, I believe there's three or four signals that will probably be rehab, rehabilitated in the corridor. We still in the preliminary sign phases, so we don't know exactly what will be kept or replaced in those corridors. And we have a large culvert that we're going to rehabilitate in this section. This one's on a similar schedule as ours, however, this will be a single-season construction. There will be no closures of the roadway, this is a maintenance project, a mill and fill with guide rail, signs. Traffic will be maintained during the construction project. We're anticipating a May letting and construction beginning in this summer of June of twenty-six and being completed by December of twenty-six. Chris Burkle, he's the design job manager and also designer for the project, and Bob Shaler is the project manager. We sort of consolidated the work roles here, so I gave the presentation for Bob since I was already planning to attend the meeting. We've also brought in comment sheets for anybody that has questions or comments after we give our presentation. November twenty-fourth, we're targeting a comment period, a couple weeks for this one as well. If anybody has any questions or concerns.
Okay, any questions from board members? First, thank you for, whoop, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I guess my one question is, I'm familiar with that area, I don't live far from either of those projects. Those areas seem to be fine, is it just that they're due for renewal, or is there something we don't see that causes this to happen?
Yeah, everything's on a program, we try to keep up with corridors and maintenance before it deteriorates too far, that it gets too expensive to rehabilitate. So that particular part of Miller Support needs to be redone and like the culvert and the the nine, this traffic signal, that culvert that I was speaking about on the first presentation has a red flag on it. It's due for replacement, we've been watching it for the last couple of years, and we really need to have it replaced soon before it degrades further and compromises the road.
So I want to just say thank you for coming in, doing the presentation. Sorry.
I do have one.
I did have a question on that, on two.
It did sound like you were wrapping us up, so I understand where council everyone was coming. I just, I am unfamiliar, if you could explain the reason for going to the single barrel from the double barrel in that culvert? Or why we would do it that way, is it an easier construction schedule, is it, you know, improved since nineteen ninety on the engineering factor of it? I just, I just have no idea what the context would be.
Culvert was replaced in nineteen, or it was installed in ninety-one, and it was only thirty-five years. A box culvert, we could easily see forty-five, fifty, sixty years out of that culvert. So it's, if we're gonna open up the road and replace it, we'd rather get more lifespan out of the culvert versus what we got out of the first time, because we did have to pave the invert roughly twenty years into the service life. And it was kind of new to be doing that kind of work on it, it sort of degraded faster than we expected it to be. So to replace it with a box culvert is more conducive for the replacement option.
Sure. Okay. So the question I had regarding the nine ninety project, obviously slimming it down to single lane each direction during construction is a lot easier and a lot more viable than trying to close portions of it. Or my question is, are you going to need anything from Amherst? Police presence at rush hour or anything along those lines?
We haven't got that far, but there's potential, but it is on a state highway, so we could use troopers to do enforcement for speed zones.
Okay, well, if, if there is anything you need, obviously, we're here to, to help make everything safe and practical, so just please feel free to reach out. Any other questions? Good? All right, see what happens, I'm, I'm short time, so they, you know, they're like, Brian doesn't need to ask anything, I see how it is. All right, no, very good, thank you very much, and thank you everybody for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to town board agenda items. So the meeting, we have a couple of items up front. First of all, I think we've, you've got a recognition or an announcement, Jackie, for Veterans Day? We've got the committee coming in, yes, or parts of the committee? Okay. Okay. So then we're going to have a public hearing on adoption of local law to amend restrictions imposed, the condition of zoning on three thirty maple. Obviously, that came out of planning board with a recommendation and conditions attached. I know we have one condition that council member Berger has worked with their council and our council and our planning department to amend, so we'll have that amendment. Sean, you're doing the presentation, okay? Along with Dr. McGrath. I have to move the seeker during the public hearing, which is what Steve, making sure that I knew. I've got that written down in big bold letters, so when I forget, it'll just be my fault, you can cut in and remind me.
And it's buried in the middle of the resolution, and I have the page number.
Got it. Well, so we'll have the seeker, we'll have an amendment, we don't need to amend until after the seeker, right? Okay. My intent is to call for a vote on this tonight, is everybody okay with that? All right, the next item on the agenda is local law to amend the zoning map again for South Linden. This is a cleanup from prior conditions, issues. In the interest of this project's already been ahead, in front of us, we've already voted once, we're tweaking the conditions. And they are trying to get this into planning board, is that correct, Dan? It's. So because there's no December meeting, and they're in front of the planning board in November, my intent would be to hold this and vote this resolution tonight.
They will be doing a presentation, correct?
They, yeah, they'll be here for a presentation on the change, I assume Palumbo will be here. Yeah. Yeah.
He's coming, but the changes are the recommendations from the planning board and from the planning department.
So.
Do you want to add anything, Dan?
I mean, I'm happy to ask at least one of my questions now, or we can wait till later, I don't know how you want to handle it, Dan.
Yeah, so. So they're proposing to drop the first of the two conditions that were originally approved by the town board. And that essentially is to increase the number of structures on the property, reduce the size of the two large buildings that they had proposed, and you've probably seen several times, it's in the, it's in the packet as a concept rendering. And, and just go back to the two buildings that were proposed. We, the planning board asked them to think about splitting those two buildings up into three or four smaller structures. They don't seem to want to do that, so we're, we're faced with two buildings, large buildings, as were portrayed in the renderings in the town board letter that I sent to you. And I suspect Jeff will be here tonight to talk about that unless somebody knows something else.
So the, the condition that we approved, what, three months ago? Was based on the recommendation from the planning board? And so are you telling me that the planning board has not seen this change from the four to six units per building? Because we don't have a new recommendation from them, so I'm assuming it's coming straight to us.
Yes. Yep. Because, yeah, because it's, it's your condition.
Right, it's our condition.
Ultimately, on the zoning, it's your condition.
Yes, which, I mean, in my opinion, I took on the recommendation of the planning board after the planning board's process and review. Would that process has not happened again for the removal of this condition.
We looked at, I think, the, the advice was that it did not have to go back to the planning.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that is one hundred percent an illegal thing, I was just asking if the planning board, because it was their original recommendation, if they had weighed in, because they didn't see it in the packet.
Nothing new, no.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else anybody wants to talk about on that subject?
So again, seeker during the, Steve?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, so that eliminates Resolution nine forty-six, it'll be voted on during the public hearing for, I mean, it doesn't eliminate it, but we'll vote on that during the public hearing for nine forty-four. Resolution nine forty-seven is Boulevard Mall project. We do have a presentation, Liz is giving that presentation with Chuck. And so what Liz and I talked about was holding the vote until after public expression, similar to how we handled vote a couple of weeks ago. So she'll do the presentation, we'll go to public expression, we'll come back, we'll vote on this before consent agenda. Does that make sense? Okay. All right, Resolution seven oh two is gonna be held again?
Yes.
And then we go into potential consent agenda. So Resolution nine forty-eight is a cost-neutral set of changes in the twenty-twenty-six budget. Does not impact the tax rate, they're offsetting changes. Just clean up stuff. There any questions about that? Okay, any reason not to include that in consent? Okay, Resolution nine forty-nine, Councilwoman Berger has Arts and Culture and Public Places Board appointment. Are there any questions about that appointment? No, any reason withhold the appointment from consent? Resolution nine fifty is the nine eleven commemoration committee appointment, any questions about that appointment? Any reason not to include that in consent? Resolution nine fifty-one is naming the Amherst main library, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Marinucci has, do you want to hold this?
No, this is the notice of the public hearing that'll be held on December first.
So we can notice the public hearing on consent?
Yes.
Any reason not to do that via consent?
The actual renaming will be out following the public hearing.
Okay.
Very excited about it, though.
So on consent to set the public hearing. Resolution nine fifty-two is a license agreement for one eleven Bywater Drive. Recommend we grant that license agreement, any reason not to do that via consent? Okay, Resolution nine fifty-three is certificate of abandonment, parcels one and two for one thirty-five Admiral's Walk, any questions regarding the resolution?
I just have a quick question, because the highway superintendent is here. I'm going to assume Superintendent Floss that there is no opposition from highway on the abandonment of these parcels? No. I have no objection, thank you.
All right, any reason not to include that in consent? Resolution nine fifty-four is the DocuSign government at Carisoft, CRS fifty-nine twenty-two, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason withhold that from consent?
I want to make sure that we have an amendment to make it subject to the successful completion of CRS.
Do we need to do that via amendment?
It already says approving successful completion, could we, you know, finish out, like, maybe Scrivener's error, if you want to add a little bit more context?
I would consider it a Scrivener's error, every, every, every contract we do has completion of contract routing service. So I would just add that after, so completion of contract routing service.
But the town attorney approval is part of CRS.
Contract.
That it goes, okay.
It's part of contract routing, so let's just add that, because we could do that with a Scrivener's error. Okay, any reason not to do that via consent with that Scrivener's error? Okay. Resolution nine fifty-five, second floor carpet installation, CRS fifty-seven ninety-seven, any questions regarding that resolution? Any reason not to do that via consent? Resolution nine fifty-six is a purchase of a new trailer, any questions regarding that resolution? Any reason not to do that via consent? Resolution nine fifty-seven is the senior center cafe furniture purchase, CRS fifty-eight forty-four, any reason not to do that via consent? Resolution nine fifty-eight is a budget transfer authorization, that's in the twenty-five budget, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason not to do that via consent? Sorry. Resolution nine fifty-nine is budget transfers and amendments, any questions regarding those? Any reason not to do that via consent? Resolution nine sixty is an award of bid two zero two five zero three seven, removal and replacement of dump body, CRS fifty-nine oh five, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason not to award that via consent? Resolution nine sixty-one is an award of RFP two zero two five zero six, Medicare Advantage Plan, CRS fifty-nine oh six, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason not to do it via consent? Resolution nine sixty-two is an award of bid OGS mini bid two zero two five zero five two, two Chevy Silverado twenty-five hundred HDs, CRS ninety-five fifteen, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason not to award that via consent? Resolution nine sixty-three is a community benefit agreement between the Greens Luxury Apartment LLC in the town of Amherst, CRS fifty-nine twenty-four, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason not to accept that via consent? Just like to thank the Green Organization, that North French Soccer Facilities needed restrooms for a long time. We're excited to have those coming. Resolution nine sixty-four is a piggyback with the Erie County Salt Contract, CRS fifty-nine thirty-five, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine, my understanding is Erie County is going with Canadian salt, American rock salt was eliminated from their bidders list. Right, so you, you at least have two options to draw from, great. Would have thought I would live through a salt shortage. Resolution, good luck. Resolution nine sixty-five is a purchase of two tilt trailers, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine sixty-six is a piggyback, NYS OGS Salt Contract, CRS fifty-nine thirty-eight, any questions regarding the resolution there? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine sixty-seven is a recreation attendant, part-time, youth and rec, two positions, any questions regarding the appointments? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine sixty-eight is a laborer for youth and recreation, any questions regarding the appointment? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine sixty-nine is to authorize supervisor to execute contract with general code to update chapter two oh three zoning the town of Amherst code with enhanced graphics, CRS fifty-eight ninety-six, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy is the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five stop DWI contract, CRS fifty-nine oh seven for the county of Erie, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-one is training and travel requests for NCFI Basic Network Investigation Course, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-two is the Delta Sonic Car Wash Systems Incorporated, CRS fifty-nine oh eight Townwide Car Wash Contract, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-three is the intermunicipal agreement for the town of Clarence, CRS fifty-nine nineteen, Crossing Guards at Transit Middle School, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-four is a class instructor for Dale Sucko, Sucko? CRS fifty-nine ten, any questions regarding the resolution, any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-five is a class instructor for Rena Catawine? Can, Cannonwine, Cannonwine, CRS fifty-nine eleven, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-six is class instructor Nancy Wise Reed, CRS fifty-nine oh nine, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-seven is change order number two, time extension, CIR Electrical Construction Company, WPCF Building Number One, Screen and Valve Improvements, Town of Amherst Project Numbers twenty sixteen dot zero, zero two H and twenty eighteen dot zero, zero two B, CRS fifty-nine twenty-three, any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy-eight is to approve sole source contract for MFG Playground Equipment, CRS. Resolution nine seventy eight is to approve sole source contract for um MFG Playground Equipment CRS fifty eight thirty nine, any questions regarding the resolution?
I do have one question and wanted to make sure that the language in the first warehouse clause does meet what Linda's email. It does still say the Sourcewell contract, which is the pricing we're going with, but we're, is that, does that say it the way that you want it said to be? So you, yeah, you, okay. I just saw your email following it and I know we're using the Sourcewell pricing, but we're not actually piggybacking on it, cause we're using it as a sole source. And it does say sole source, but I wanted to make sure we were happy with the language there, if you're good with it, then I'm good with it.
Okay, any reason to withhold it from consent? Resolution nine seventy nine is an emergency purchase authorization for window repair. Any questions regarding the resolution? Any reason to withhold it from consent? Communication one twelve is correspondence from Shawn Hopkins Esquire regarding thirty, or three hundred thirty Maple Road. I would ask that we receive that, refer to the town planning department, town attorney. And should we incorporate that into a public hearing? And file it with a public hearing? I guess we can't really do that via consent, well, we can, well, okay. Perfect, okay, any reason not to do that via consent? Communication one thirteen are letters of support for proposed seven sixteen sports complex. Um, I would ask that these be incorporated into the um minutes of the public hearing as well. Any questions, any reason not to do that via consent? Communication uh one fourteen is correspondence from Erica Bersinski regarding sidewalk snow relief program. I would ask that we refer this to the town attorney and town highway department? Anybody else? Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication one fifteen is a notice of claim for Jennifer Grashav versus the town of Amherst, so we'll ask that we refer that to the town attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? Communication one sixteen is a notice of claim for Charter Communications Incorporated versus town of Amherst. They asked that we refer this to the town attorney as well, any reason not to do that via consent? Communication one seventeen is summons and complaint US Bank Trust National Association versus town of Amherst at all. You know, yeah, so we refer this to the town attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? And communications one eighteen is summons and complaint for Snorik LLC DBA Enterprise Rent a Car and E A N Holdings LLC versus town of Amherst at all. Again, I would ask that we refer this to the town attorney. Any reason not to do that via consent? We have a couple of suspension items tonight. Um, we'll deal with uh tax clerk and the clerk's office. And then um an authorization for me to sign this uh snow and ice control agreement between town of Amherst Highway Department and SUNY Buffalo. It's kinda timely, so I would ask that we um get that taken care of this evening so that tonight we can plow snow. And uh.
There's one more.
There's one more, which ones? Oh, sorry, I don't have that one in front of me. And we have the demolition for six sixty seven Emerson. You're gonna have to just read that. Okay, alright, um, with that, we do have a personnel matter uh to discuss in executive session. Um, we're going to motion to adjourn to executive session at this time. Um, Bob McCarthy and yourself.
Should Jeff?
Should, yeah, Jeff, I mean, I, yeah, you can come back. Okay, I, I don't know if it's really, okay, fine.
I think he should be there.
All in favor?